Please rise for president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to our commissioners' meeting for Thursday, November ninth, 2023. You can probably join us through Zoom system, a phone number, ID number, and password on our website on this agenda. Before we start, I would like to take just a brief moment here. As I walk in this morning, there was a desk chair sitting in the hallway by the elevator, a Woolworth jacket on it and a pair of boots, and a great tribute to a dedicated employee, Mr. Nye. We lost him on Saturday. He fought a hard battle with cancer, worked as hard as he could, spent much time in the courthouse as he could, but I have him on his side, Mr. Randy and I. I appreciate that, so. Okay, first, we're business. Chief Quirino Dieter, any second sessions?
The redoubt now.
Okay, next is public comment. Anyone to give a public comment today? Good morning, Laura.
My name is Laura Krusniewski, I live in Potsville. My first question is, do I need a stamp to speak here because it's my understanding that Mary Jo lost, was her, the people who wanted to vote for her were deprived of that right if they didn't have a wedding stamp? So do you need any criteria to speak here today?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. So what I want to read is really, basically, I'm just asking, okay, here we go. Malcolm X said, "I have no mercy or compassion in me for a society that will crush people and then penalize them for not being able to stand up under oppression." In times, it is a time for martyrs now, and if I am to be one, I will be for the cause of brotherhood. That's the only thing that can save this country. Now, he said these things in the 1960s, and he was persecuted for them as well. When a person places the proper value on freedom, there is nothing under the sun that he will not do to acquire this freedom. Whenever you hear a martyr saying he wants freedom, but in the next breath he is going to tell you what he won't do to get it or what he doesn't believe in doing in order to get it, he doesn't believe in freedom. A man who believes in freedom will do anything under the sun to acquire and preserve his freedom. I am sorry to say that the subject I most dislike was mathematics. I had thought about it, and I think the reason was that mathematics leaves no room for argument. If you make a mistake, that was all there was to it. You're not to be so blind with patriotism that you can't face reality. Wrong is wrong, no matter who does it or who says it. We don't see that, and we don't hear people talking about these things today, but we are really in deep, deep trouble. When you don't have the right to go into and vote for the person that you want to vote to, when you smear people because you need to get an advantage, this stuff is all really very wrong, and I have to tell you, I'm appalled by this election. Thank you.
Any else make a public comment? Good morning, George.
George Kankovich, Palato. We see you, the election is over now, and I hope that the people that were elected are going to do what they said they were going to do. And first and foremost, if you don't know by now, I'm going to talk about senior citizens and veterans are being neglected all over the United States. They're losing their homes right and left. They're losing their rights as citizens. You got people that never paid into the system one day, and these people are paid their whole lives, losing their homes. What's worse? I don't know if you've noticed, yesterday they had suicide. Veteran suicides have gone up 20%. 20%. Now, that's, don't worry about other nations when you've got your people here who fought to keep us free, losing their lives, just taking their lives, pulling a gun out and blowing their brains out. Let's hear the truth. This is what politicians don't want to hear. They don't want to hear facts. They don't want to hear truth. Senior citizens, additional 10% committing suicides. These are people we can't reach anymore. Now, they're gone. They're gone, and their families are crushed. And you know what happens after these suicides? More suicides because they lost loved ones. It's time. It's time that this county takes a stand and say, "We're not going to put up with this nonsense." Politics is politics. It should be thrown out the window. You're working for taxpayers. You're doing or are supposed to be doing your job for what the people want, not what the campaign wants, or Republican, Democrat, independent. I don't care who it is. I don't care who it is. And start talking for the people and doing it for the people. There's people in our county, our county, are losing their homes right and left and reassessing. I don't even know where to go with that. And to get this vision, who have changed their name at least three or four times, three or four times, to keep their name clear, it's ridiculous. And I guarantee you, there's going to be a lot of people in here today that are going to be in here for appeals. Get ready. I'm telling you, get ready. And if people don't realize this, if they don't see it, I don't know what has to happen. I just don't know what has to happen. I'm tired of it. It's time to wake up. It's cool for county. Wake up. Wake up, pots with them. It's time to wake up, and time is now.
Any else make a public comment today? Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Andrew Zloski, Palato. This is Astra Discounter, and I representing Astra Oldwood, her employee, under the courthouse and other obligations in the county. Two weeks ago, I've not received any response yet regarding any issues I brought up. I know from what I've been told that the motto was, "Keep on waiting." Well, the 911 center two Fridays ago, even working double shifts, was still short-staffed at football Friday. Down, one operator. Well, the motto was, "Keep on waiting." What if on a Friday afternoon, somebody's throwing a party, they call 911, and they're like, "My neighbors are making noise. One operator's on the phone with them." Everyone, "Um, neighbors' laws are bargain. Other operators on the phone with them. Somebody's having a medical emergency. Well, I guess you're going to have to keep on waiting because our operators are tied up because there's not enough operators in there to staff the facility adequately." Part of this is because of the low wages. The county will not sit down to negotiate to compete with the market that is going on today. I'm looking at Bullet Point Seven here under Human Resource Office. The county is looking to hire a firm or to continue with a firm to spend money to advertise for recruitment and retention purposes. I'm sitting here asking for a meeting with the county to hopefully alleviate some of that. Bring our members' wages up to a living, affordable wage. Yes, you understand they have health coverage and retirement. What we need is the living wage to bring the people on board, bring them here. I ask, what's the price in life? There may be different things. I'm projected to work another 20 years or figure out my salary over the next 20 days as the value of my life. Maybe the value of my life is what my life insurance policy states. What's everybody's value of their life to a loved one here? It's priceless. And for a phone call to go unanswered at 911 because the county will not sit down to negotiate wages. Like I said, it's also in senior services. If there's elderly abuse, they get put in the back burner, and as I already said a lot, two weeks ago, the tax office may have to look at other ways to process taxes because they're short-staffed. Whether that be hire a contracting firm or whatever, what are paying a lot more than what are people being paid? And who knows where that firm would be, they would not, the employees there would not be paying taxes to this county. We're looking to give people living wages here who pay taxes in this county and keep them here. Have people want to stay here, have job, have dignity. Every job has dignity. Whether you're trash collector, I don't know. Well, thank you. My three minutes is up.
Any else make a public comment today?
Yep, I'm good.
Morning.
Good morning. Melinda Dybert, North Manhattan Township. Congratulations to those who were met with success in their bids for various positions in this election cycle, be they for state, county, or local office. Some campaigns were fashioned and executed in an honorable, ethical, and honest manner. Others, not so much. I will say, for the successful commissioner candidates, you are fortunate that the average county voter is ill-informed regarding the dire situation that we are in. The voluminous county debt, nepotism being used as the primary determinant for being hired or promoted for a county position, the out-of-control spending and hiring of consultants, attorneys, et cetera, for matters that should be handled in-house. You know, the list goes on and on. Too much for me to go into here today in my three minutes. Successful candidates were also lucky that many registered voters exhibited blind loyalty to their party affiliation rather than objectivity and critical thinking. Apathy, disgust, and frustration rule the day. Over the last couple of weeks, we have seen ballot harvesting, theft, deception, and smear campaigns. Even Election Day itself had its share of excitement, shall we say. On Election Day, I was stationed at Higgins Township West as a volunteer poll worker, and shortly after six in the evening, I was aggressively approached by a, shall we say, rather imposing and overbearing figure who rudely interrupted me while I was in conversation with a fellow poll worker. She wanted to give me an education on biosolids. She was proclaiming that she was some sort of expert on biosolids. I let her know several times that Election Day at a polling place was neither the proper venue or time for that conversation, and I asked her to take a few steps back because she was right in my face. I asked her, "Do you have a card with your contact information?" Which she provided. Catherine Heatherington Cunfer was the name.
Melinda, your time is up.
And as I shall say,
Melinda, your time is up.
The strawberry doesn't fall far from the plant.
Melinda, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think it was either.
Melinda, either side, top or leave, okay? Your choice. Next time you go on out, okay?
Can I vote now? Is it my time or?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Donkel, Palato. Speaking of Election Day, quite a bit more excitement than Melinda touched on. Boots, you blatantly broke the confidentiality clause in the lawsuit regarding a county discussing some very stubborn, in-depth details that should not have been discussed with voters, which I'm sure that'll come out in the court hearing, in the trial, because those people are willing to testify. Also, there's a woman inside one of the polling places in the Ringtown area handing stuff out, claiming she was a poll watcher, but handing things out and encouraging people to vote for certain people. It happened to be the co-owner of B and R Farms, your wife, where you admitted that you spread wastewater sludge on. Then, we have the intimidating poll worker from your daughter Kate, who owns Neverdung Farms, that you admitted spreads biosolids on her farm in Carbon County. Just seems like it's a family of bullies. Gary Bender was inside a polling place encouraging voters. They didn't have a stamp, or they couldn't vote for Mary Jo. After the election, just minutes after claiming a victory, Mr. Padora was in a physical altercation with an elderly attorney. That's just mind-blowing. It went outside. They were encouraging not to call the cops. If he gets upset here at a meeting, is he going to come down off the podium and start a physical altercation with Mr. Marshall? Just makes you wonder. Maybe we'll have a cage match in the commissioner's room. That'll be pretty interesting. Mr. Padora also promised 12 jobs out so far. Mr. Bender will be gone, Mr. Marshall will be gone, Mr. Rice will be gone before he even gets here. I was even told, if I play my cards right, I'll run a tax assessment. Unfortunately, I went all in on my cards, helped me. I'd rather stick up for the public than the taxpayers than play those games. But I welcome George to his landing dock session. I hope he exposes everything that he can in the next couple of weeks. Touching on what the union reference said about the short staff there on Fridays, I like how he mentioned football Friday because it plays right into what I was told. Mr. Crater, that runs the place, two Fridays ago, I guess it was, said, "I'll stick around and help you Friday afternoon. I'll do three to five. I'll answer the phone. By five o'clock, I gotta leave to go to the high school football game to be part of the chain gang, move the chains." That's how much value there is on life down in that center. Boots, you just said to the newspaper, "Five million dollar insurance policy will cover George's escapades." He's already spent 1.5 million. Do you realize that you were part of this lawsuit for the retaliation, and you are personally liable for part of that? I just want to let you know, when you have to give up part of your farm, hopefully part where the strawberries are.
Mr. Donkel, your time's done.
Preferably don't give it away with wastewater sludge here.
Mr. Donkel, your time is done. Thank you. Any else want to make a public comment? Number one. Looking for a approval of business for the commissioners' meeting of October 25th, and also the work session of November 25th.
So.
Second.
On a question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hens.
Okay, our children and youth, 1094. Approval and agreement with lifespan family services of PA Moncton Tani, Pennsylvania for foster care services, traditional code at a per diem rate of $75.48 to the term July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. In addition, approval and agreement with Bear Foundation of Pennsylvania to Moncton PA for foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Lower level, ages zero through 12, at $77.47. Lower levels, ages 13 through 21, at $82.75. Supported foster care, $89.05, $6 cents, and supported young apparent at $103.34 for the term July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Also, approval and agreement with Community Options Incorporated, Princeton, New Jersey, for dual-licensed residential community homes for individuals with intellectual disability and autism services at a per diem rate of $791.31 to the term July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Is there motion of these two requests?
So.
Sorry, three. Okay, three requests, I'm sorry.
Second.
On a question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Under Gen 95, 911 indications, a approval to enter into agreement with Environmental Research Institute for bid of Great Highlands, California, for GIS mapping maintenance. The term of the agreement is January 1st, 2024 through December 30th, 2024. The cost agreement is $14,296. Is there motion of that?
So.
Second.
On a question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Under Gen 96, block rank programs, approval agreement with Potsville Park Authority, number one, South Second Street, Potsville PA, for the 102 parking permits for the capital parking garage and 14 parking rooms for the spaces on 200 Block of Laurel Boulevard at a rate of $41 per permit per month with a contract cap of 80, I'm sorry, $57,000. $72 for this period, January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Is there motion of that?
So.
Second.
On a question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Under Gen 97, Human Resources Office, approval of contract of Cross and Town, Chambersburg PA, for a period of three months from November 1st, 2023 through February 9th, 2024, with a three-month extension. The contract is for recruitment branding, advertisement, and website service to a one-time cost of $6,500, $2,000 for each recruitment video package, and a monthly management cost of $2,775. Also, approval at three-year renewal of the Bennett Star Retirement Prescription Drug Plan, number 2197. The monthly premium for the plan is, 2197 will increase from $290.60 to $3.10 per version for the period of January 1st, 2024, and through December 2031, 2026. The rates, I'm sorry, this relates to a 4.3% increase for the plan year 2024 and a 0% increase for both years 2025 and 2026. Approval of a three-year renewal of the Bennett Star Retirement Prescription Drug Plan, number 6Y91. The monthly premium for plan number 6591 will increase from $198.27 to $206.80 per version for the period of January 1st, 2024, December 31st, 2026. This relates to a 4.3% increase for plan year 2024 and a 0% increase for plan years 2025 and 2026. Also, approval to review the agreement with the BeneCon Group in order to serve as the administrator of the county's health reimbursement account plan, a monthly premium of $4 for employee. This will be split between BeneCon, the county, and broker as follows. BeneCon will be, achieved $1.84 for employee per month. County will receive $1.66 for employee per month, and the broker will receive $0.80 for employee per month effective January 1st, 2024, for a 12-month period unless determined by written notice to the other parties at at least 60 days' notice in advance. Approval to renew the agreement with One America for Life Accidental Death and Dismemberment Insurance and Long-Term Disability Insurance Coverage for eligible county employees for a period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. Life at .178 for $1,000 of coverage, I'm sorry, life at .178 coverage for $1,000 of coverage. A 3.7% decrease from 1.85 for $1,000 of coverage. That's the dismember, .02 for $1,000 of coverage. A flat to last year, and the LTD to, that's .3 for $100 of monthly coverage payroll. A 16.7% decrease from the .35 per year for $100 coverage. Is there motion of these five requests?
Second.
On a question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Under new business, our pastor representative, Paul, good morning, sir.
Our commissioners, good morning, Quirino. This morning, I have several budget adjustments I'd like to present. Each budget adjustment does have an explanation on the bottom. Some of the budget adjustments do involve a transfer from contingency. When I get to that budget adjustment, I will provide a brief explanation. I also ask department heads representing that specific department to be present at today's meeting in case you should have any additional questions. They are available. First one I'd like to present is on behalf of MDDS for $298. Next is on behalf of the commissioner's office for $600. Next is on behalf of drug and alcohol for $651. Next is on behalf of records management for $2,100. Next is on behalf of prison for $5,000. Next one is also on behalf of prison for $520,000. Commissioners, this budget adjustment does represent a transfer from contingency. Specifically, there's two components involved in this budget adjustment. One is for an increase in outsourcing of prisoners for $445,000. There was money included in the budget for this year, but the anticipated cost or expense is going to be greater than what was budgeted, and therefore, this is the best good faith estimate in terms of what will be needed between now and the end of the year. In addition, wages for overtime, again, money, funds have been budgeted. However, they do anticipate they're going to need some additional funds to cover overtime between now and the end of the year, and the increase that's being requested is for $75,000. So therefore, the total budget adjustment is for $520,000. They were able to identify some savings within their departmental budget of approximately $200,000, so the difference of $320,000 is the amount that will actually be transferred from contingency. Next is on behalf of solid waste for $6,220. Commissioners, this actually is a result of a bulky item disposal for fall cleanup. Some of the expenses were more than what was anticipated. They were able to garner some savings within their departmental budget, offset some of the additional costs. However, they did come short by about $1,514, so that amount will also be transferred from contingency for $1,514, not the $6,220. Next is on behalf of treasures office. This is for $22,850. Commissioners, this does involve a transfer from contingency for the full amount, $22,850. There's two components to this. The first is, for this year, expenses for the city tax office were higher than what was anticipated, included in the budget. The county is responsible for one third of the cost for funding the tax collection by the county taxes, by the city tax, by the Potsville Tax Office. In addition, there's also a carryover invoice from the previous year for 2022 that's also included in this. So a total transfer of $22,850 is being transferred from contingency for this request. Next is on behalf of fringe benefits for $25,000. Commissioners, what this represents is the county reimburses retirees for Medicare Part B. There's approximately 340 retirees that receive this reimbursement. Funds were budgeted, included for this purpose. However, they do anticipate we will be running short, and therefore, some additional funds have to be transferred to cover the fourth quarter disbursement, and that amount is for $25,000. Next is on behalf of the district attorney's office for $30,000. Commissioners, this does involve a transfer from contingency for the $30,000. It includes DUI testing fees. This is something new that was not anticipated. It was not included in the 2023 budget, and this is what the DA's office anticipates what they will be incurring between now and the end of the year, so therefore, funds are being transferred from contingency to cover this anticipated expense. Next is on behalf of coroner's office. Total budget request is for $39,500. Commissioners, this includes two components. The first component concerns the use CAT scan machine that was approved at last week's meeting. A majority of it is being covered by Act 122 funding. However, there is a little bit of a shortfall of about $14,500, so that transfer is coming from contingency to cover that cost so that the department can move forward with that purchase. Also, too, the other part is for $25,000. Also, too, the other part is for twenty five thousand for a transfer from contingency. Uh, this is for autopsy services. They did include money in this year's budget, however, they are going to be running short. They anticipate this is going to be the additional amount that they're going to need between now and the end of the year, so the fourteen thousand five plus the twenty five comes to the thirty nine thousand five hundred, which will be transferred from contingency. Next is on behalf of Public Works. Total dollar amount is for a hundred and eighty nine thousand. This is also transferred from contingency. Uh, Commissioners, this represents, I guess it was back in March or so, a contract was approved to replace, uh, the roof, uh, at the, the adult probation, uh, office. This includes both labor and materials. Um, the cost was not anticipated and therefore not included in the twenty twenty three budget, so therefore, the full amount will be transferred from contingency. And the last item I have is on behalf of Office of Senior Services for eight hundred and forty two thousand seven hundred dollars. Commissioners, OSS is approximately a six point six million dollar in operation. Um, one hundred percent of the operation is funded with federal and state dollars. Uh, the department was able to identify some program savings within their departmental budget, so they're readjusting line items so that, uh, the savings can be redired, redirected into program services for eligible senior citizens. That total request is for eight hundred and forty two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Can I, just a couple, uh, items, a couple questions. First of all, on the, uh, the prison, uh, transfer, Paul, I just wanted to note that, uh, your analysis that you had done with administration as far as transferring of, uh, inmates out to other facilities, uh, that the judgment was, the financial department, that as long as we do not exceed two million dollars in transferring people out, that seems to be the most cost-effective way to handle, uh, the, uh, incarceration of prisoners. That is our responsibility, it's one of the core responsibilities of Commissioners, uh, of, of the counties, but from that standpoint, as far as when we were talking about the intermediate placement facility, uh, we not only have numbers that we're looking at in excess of twenty million dollars to do that, but also, uh, the operational cost. Approximately, how much are operational costs per year for the prison? Close to nine million?
I would say within that range, yes.
Okay, so if we were to have that other facility, that's also going to increase our operational cost, possibly, if it's for the same amount of, uh, people incarcerated, would probably go up, let's be conservative, uh, seven million to nine million additional besides the cost of the new facility. But your analysis was, as long as we did not exceed two million dollars in a year, it probably was the most cost-effective way to handle, uh, prisoners. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner, and that, uh, analysis was performed a couple of years ago, um, and also that, uh, analysis was based just on the brick and mortar construction part of it, it did not factor in the operational cost or expenses.
Right, okay. Very good, and, uh, a- as far as, I, I know that the wardens here, we have, how many that we have out right now, approximately?
Fifty-three.
We have fifty-three out?
Very soon, so it'll be, it'll be in the sixties by the end of the week.
Okay, and then as far as the people, uh, our numbers that we have incarcerated across the street are how many, approximately?
Two thirty.
Two thirty? And we're licensed for how many?
Two seventy-sevens are, is the number.
Okay, so in essence, it, with the fluctuation, we could bring people back to have them here, however, that buffer is there because of the court and for other reasons?
For other reasons, for classification reasons, and
Right.
security reasons, safety reasons.
Yes, I appreciate that, and again, uh, you and your staff do an excellent job over at the, uh, jail, so thank you. Uh, I appreciate that. The other thing, Paul, was on the, uh, uh, the reimbursement for the city tax collector, and I urge my fellow Commissioners that, uh, as I did early on, uh, that we sit down because that is an agreement that is done between the school district, the city, and the county, and my suggestion early on was to take the amount of taxes that we're getting in comparison and pay our proportional share of that versus just paying it one-third at a time, and that's something that has to be done by this committee that is set up between the school district, the school board, and the county. Thank you.
There were some conversations about that, but obviously, the school district would have to pay a bigger chunk because they're a major part of that collection, and we'd have to get two out of the three people to redo a change, that was, that was a drawback on that, you know, obviously, the amount of money that the municipality picks up in the county is tiny compared to the amount of money going to the school district, so it would take two, two, two out of the three partners to make that happen, and it's on a four-year cycle, we couldn't get it done this year, so we have to talk about trying to do something. The problem is right now, there's no, there's open, there's no, there's no cap on it, so whatever the city sends us for a bill, we have to pay, and well, over twenty thousand dollars, and when they, I had budgeted for it, and then all of a sudden gets a twenty thousand dollar additional fee for above last year, last year's amount, so it, it is a concern, it takes place, that there's no, there's no limit to it, it's an open, it's an open, open, uh, like a line check, so, yes, I mean, I am concerned about that. Also, Paul, on the District Attorney's fees, that thirty thousand dollars, obviously, when a person is charged, then they're supposed to pay the court costs, that could come back to us, but once again, it's difficult to get that back, so, so that, that is, you know, the DUI testing would be, it would be part of sentencing, it would have been restitution back to the county, the problem is, it doesn't always get, often, often doesn't get paid back, so.
Are there any other questions about the?
Yes, I do.
Sure things, Commissioner?
Under the Coroner's Office, I know last week we approved the purchase of that CAT scanner. I wish at that time, uh, we knew that there was a little shortfall in the amount that it wasn't, uh, coming out of Act one twenty-two, from under that, uh, agenda item and motion that I thought it was going to be fully funded under that, and then to find this out, so, uh, I would have rather do know that, uh, ahead of time, uh, next time, to make sure that that's done. Uh, also, uh, you know, please pass that off to the doc, I would appreciate that. Did he know that at the time, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
But, uh, that would be one item that I would definitely, again, would state it on that, and also, not to, to get into a, a thing here, but just, uh, uh, an opinion on, on the, uh, the prison. Uh, again, with this, uh, yes, I know the amount of what you, you said many years ago, the only thing that's missing there is the component, we have no room to treat these folks that are getting incarcerated, and probably the people out there are saying, well, you know, they deserve to be in there, but the thing is, is to cut down recidivism, that return factor, that hopefully, you know, try to, uh, help that person, whether, uh, they lost their job, they did something stupid or whatever, some people need to be in prison, not be put on ankle bracelets and so forth, and as our rate goes up, our amount of people that we keep in there, we're not treating people and giving them proper services, whether, uh, drug and alcohol or mental health, and actually, mental health problems have escalated over into the prison, which we had to actually seclude different areas because they need to be separated, they can't be just, uh, out there, and they have to be under watch, so, again, that escalated, uh, our population and so forth, and from what I understand, uh, Paul, from, uh, this, this, this figure, probably this year is going to be escalated almost to one point eight million dollars, uh, from what I understand, so close to that two million dollar mark, and it's going to escalate, and thank God, the, the, the counties that we sent to have been very prudent in keeping costs at, at the, uh, same rate for a long time. Uh, sooner or later, they might, you know, all of a sudden do that, but, uh, it's not fixing the problem. All it is, is, uh, again, a circulation, and a lot of times, uh, not that we do it, uh, many times, but there's times that we have to triple sell, which also is against the Department of Justice, that's why we had to start moving some people out, so, again, this is a, a long time issue, it hasn't been, so, again, as it goes on, we need to definitely look at this and to, uh, see where we can go. Yes, it's going to probably cost some money, but hopefully, in the end, it will save taxpayers' money, because actually, we're hopefully cutting down on the recidivism, and in the end, we want to make sure that that's not stuff over there to keep the safety of the, uh, the, the officers that are over there doing that, that's a big thing also. Uh, it's in an environment that you never know what will happen, and you got to make sure the safety is there, so, again, I just wanted to give another side of an opinion, and I appreciate the Commissioner giving his, thank you.
Any other questions, uh, about the, uh, budgetary adjustments? If not, we have, uh, a total of thirteen budgetary adjustments for the twenty twenty-three year, uh, for the mental health and, uh, developmental services, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, Commissioner's Office, six hundred dollars, drug and alcohol, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, Records Management, two thousand one hundred dollars, the prison, five thousand, additions to prison, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, under solid waste, six thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, Treasury Office, two thousand, sorry, twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, Fringe Benefits, twenty-five thousand, District Attorney's Office, thirty thousand, Coroner's Office, thirty-nine thousand five hundred, under Public Works, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, and this Office of Senior Services, a hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred. Is there motion for these thirteen requests?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Please pull you have a contract to talk about, sir?
I, I do, uh, Commissioners, um, county currently engages a firm by now, uh, named Azam Kaski Axelrod, uh, to perform the annual single audit. Uh, they are an independent audit firm, uh, and, uh, they've been performing the, uh, audit service for the county in the past. Uh, the county has been happy with their service, um, they have submitted a proposal, uh, to extend their contract for two years. Um, finance administration is recommending that that, uh, extension, uh, be, uh, considered. Uh, the total cost for the two-year period is a hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, each year, it increases by about three and a half percent.
Paul, could you please stop the conversation in the background while we're trying to remember what I mean? Thank you. Is there a request to a, uh, audit contract with CNA? Is there motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Okay, under new business, uh, on behalf of District Attorney's Office, approved the contract with HNL Laboratory Medicine, Alatamp, PA. HNL Lab Medicine will process the DUI drug testing for the District Attorney's Office. Contract is retroactive beginning of September first, I'm sorry, September first, twenty twenty-three, for twelve months. shall automatic renew for successive periods, for one year. DA's office is asking for seven thousand five hundred per month, beginning September first, twenty twenty-three, to make payment for tests performed on behalf of the District DA's office. Fringe Benefit will be attached to the case if the defendant is found, or please bill the, and all funds collected for the testing will be reimbursed back to the county. Is there motion for that, Mr.?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
On behalf of Grant Matters Office, approval advertised for demolition projects in the boroughs of Montney City, St. Clair, Spookelhaven, and Tamaki. Is there who in the control of the office on Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at four PM? Development will take place Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at nine AM. Tenement ward days, Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Also, Grant Matters, rules to order contract, the amount of sixty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars to Northeast Industrial Services Corporation for a CBPG demolition project at four two three Woolley Street in Tamaki. Is there motion for these three requests?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
On behalf of our information systems group, approval of a lease with Potts Town Parking Authority, I'm sorry, Pottsville Parking Authority for park parking spaces, at the Capitol Parking Garage for MISH, office employees, that are rated forty-one dollars per space per month, for a monthly total of two hundred and five dollars, and annual total of two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for the period of January first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Also, approval of a year maintenance contract with Shadow Technologies of Dallas, Pennsylvania, for maintenance and support of the virtual infrastructure. Agreement includes phone support, onsite support, maintenance, and upgrades for four systems. Total cost of contract is eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and be paid with ARCA funds, which I've already budgeted. Is there motion for these three requests?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Paul, just, just on the question, Paul, if you could, I know that, you know, we had a separate for, uh, uh, one office as far as for parking, if you could just pull together the total amount that we know for all the departments that we're paying to, uh, Pottsville Parking Authority, I'd appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Okay, we have a motion and second, on behalf of MIS, on the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Okay, emergency management, approval of the state fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, has a material response fund grant agreement in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. This grant is used for salaries as well as response capability for health hazards, dangers, and risks associated with hazards and materials. Also, approved for the federal fiscal year twenty twenty-three Homeland Security Grant Program Agreement, the amount of one million, two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and two dollars for the South Central Task Force, that includes the counties of Adams, Cumberland, Dawson, Franklin, Lancaster, Lebanon, Perry, Spookel, and York County, the Dawson County, as the acting fiscal agent. This term is September first, twenty twenty-three, to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The funds will be used to support planning, organization, equipment, maintenance, training, and exercise in needs to both acts of terrorism and other catastrophic events. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
For our senior services at office, approval of fee for service contract, denim, with assessing independence, the business has independent living services in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. For personal care services, the rate will increase from twenty dollars and thirty-one cents to twenty dollars and nineteen cents per hour, standardized into personal care rate for personal care providers, which has been approved by the Department of Agent. Contract cap remain the same as before, seventy-two thousand, for a thirty-one dollar and eighty cents for the next fiscal year, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Addition, approval of a fee for service contract, denim, with Spookel County Transit Authority, St. Clair DA for transport tax purposes, rate remain the same as fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, with the cap will increase to eighty-six thousand six hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents. This is an eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollar eighty-five cent increase for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there motion for these three requests?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
We have drug and alcohol, approval of an endenum to Eagleville Hospital, equipment to replace existing appendix fee, another appendix fee is fully revised, two steps for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Is there motion for this request?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And next up, for Human Services, I'll turn over to Tony, good morning, Tony.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, uh, Human Resources, the transfer of Carol Federoff in the Office Support Secretarial position, under a rate of fourteen point two eight zero five, effective eleven thirteen twenty-three, coming from Aging Care Manager Two. In the Solicitor's Office, transfer of David Rice as Assistant County Solicitor, rate of seventy-five thousand, effective twelve one twenty-three, coming from Law Clerk, Law Clerk and Court Administration. In the prison, the appointment of Dennis Dietrich as a maintenance worker at the rate of eighteen point eight three six zero, effective eleven twenty twenty-three. And then drug and alcohol, a transfer of Hillary, clinic prevention specialist, trainee, at a rate of twenty-one point four five three four, effective eleven thirteen twenty-three, coming from Case Management Specialist. All these appointments are pending drug tests and physical, where appropriate, and all actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Okay, uh, Mr. Halkovich asked me to keep one second, so two, three together, Human Resources, transfer of Carol Federoff to Office Support Secretarial, the hourly rate of fourteen point two eight oh five, effective date is November thirteenth, and, uh, on the prison appointment, Dennis Dietrich as a maintenance worker at the hourly rate of eighteen point eight three six oh, effective date is, uh, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Drug and alcohol transfer, Hillary, clinic, uh, as a preventive, prevention specialist trainee, and that's hourly rate is twenty-one point one five three four, effective date is November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there motion for these three requests?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
On the Solicitor's Office, the transfer of David Rice to our Assistant County Solicitor, at an annual rate of seventy-five thousand dollars, effective rate of, uh, effective date is December first, twenty twenty-three. Is there motion for this request?
So moved.
I'll second that. On question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Halkovich?
No.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Nothing information, okay. Before we adjourn, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hess on becoming Commissioner again. And I want to thank our election board, the close, those folks that obviously were Commissioners and County, we can't be on the election board, so we had representatives take care of it for us. They did a great job. I also want to commend Al Breitcoski and his full-time staff. Job well done. And congratulations to all the candidates who were successful, but thank you to everyone who participated. This is a democracy, and it's great to see people involved and doing part of our job as Americans, so. Is there a motion for adjournment? Am I good at that, Mr. Hess?
No, just did oh, on what you said, Mr. McCann. Definitely appreciate everyone's efforts and the step up to office. And this goes down through all the local offices, boroughs, township supervisor, council, school boards. I continue to say that this is where the rubber meets the road. It affects your daily lives, and turnout means a lot. And I would hope to see that turned around someday, that we get 75, 80% of turnout in municipal elections rather than on the state and national that jumps up to, you know, big numbers. So again, appreciate everybody that did run and actually is serving and helping their communities, county, and so forth. So, and all the workers out there in all 125 precincts. It takes a lot to run an election. And those folks out there, 13 hours plus or whatever, from start to finish. So we appreciate those efforts of doing that to make this election progress happen. So thank you.
I did, I visited 17 different polls on election day, and I did the same thing. I, we have an election judge, you have a two inspectors, and two clerks, and a constable. Like Carrie said, we have to fill 125 precincts with election workers. It's not a big pain job. I thank everybody for their, you know, doing their civic duty, helping pull the election off, so. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Again, congratulations to all the winners. Thank you to all the people who put their names forward to run. It's not an easy thing to do. It's a lot of time and effort. It's people who care, even those that may be on the other side. They put the time and effort in because they do care about this community. And one of the things I hope to see, and I think that we need to become more that we unify after an election, that, you know, we're not a party. We are citizens of Schuylkill County. We are there for our neighbors. We are there to do the right thing for the people. So again, I thank those people who ran, who were not successful. I hope that they still stay engaged. But I also would hope, as Commissioner Hess said, that people get out to vote. It is our civic responsibility. And it's great to be able to complain about things, but you need to get out and have your voice heard. So again, congratulations to everyone, and thank you to all of our workers that do an outstanding job.
Any other comments? If not, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the Senate Board.